Which one is it again?
July 11.
July 11.
Oh, public.
For public?
No, none of those? Anybody?
No.
Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Do I have any abstentions?
abstained.
Two abstentions. July 11th, non-public session one.
Salute.
So moved by Mrs. Morin, second by Mr. Frida. Discussion on these. Okay, straightforward. Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Abstained?
Abstained.
Two abstentions. Minutes of July 23rd, non-public.
Actually, the order in your, in the printed packet goes two, three, four.
Well, that's all right.
So if you're looking for one, it's after public.
Okay, okay. We'll do a minutes of July 23rd, public session from 2018. So moved by Mrs. Cardinal, second by Ms. McElhany. Discussion on these. Mr. Frida.
In mine, it's sort of crowded and it's confusing about who was absent. I think it was just Penny.
Actually, I don't think those are.
I don't have them.
I don't have them either.
I had looked at them originally. Were those the ones that?
Sherry changed all the associate chairs.
Oh, you already?
Yeah, she said she would change all those.
At the bottom of page four, under financials. Just a little clarification on what the motion was. I just lost it. Hang on. Oh, financial document, under new other, the paragraph that starts with financial documentation for board meetings, the motion was to have the three monthly reports posted to the SAU Starting August 1, and then furthermore, the audit documents posted each year.
Other corrections?
What page was that on? Again, I'm sorry.
Bottom of page four, I believe.
Okay, yes, I see it. Thank you.
The doc doesn't.
Thank you.
Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor as amended? Aye. One abstention?
Yep.
Mrs. Morin abstains. All right. July 23rd, non-public session one.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Cardinal, second by Ms. McElhany.
Do you have non-public session one? Is this it?
I have it, yes.
Do you have the three? I can, for 23, I can print that for you if you'd like.
That's all right, I'll just.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any discussion on these? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One abstention?
Yep.
Non-public session two. So moved by Mrs. McElhany, second by Mrs. Morin. Discussion on these. Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Abstained.
One abstention. Non-public session three from July 23rd.
Salute.
So moved by Mrs. Morin, second by Ms. McElhany. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
One abstention. And non-public session four from July 23rd.
The only other thing that I would say on the non-publics all the way through is when it says others present, there should not be an apostrophe.
Oh.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Actually, I think that was Jess that wrote that one on there. Jessica Rollins did that one. Yeah.
But I didn't see that.
Yeah. I saw that one as well.
Discussion on, on four.
Did you have a motion?
That one needs a formatting.
Did I have a motion? I thought I did.
I'm sorry I interrupted. That was my fault.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
Mrs. Cardinal, second by Mrs. Morin. Did you get that, Sherry?
Yes, I did.
Cardinal, Morin. Discussion on these.
The formatting just needs to be fixed, the present-absent columns.
And then for this one, where it says see sheet? How are we doing that? Are we going to, are you going to take the sheet and paste it in?
Yes. It will be, it will be included in the minutes. Jess has that spreadsheet. We'll just include it as part of the PDF.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
One abstention. Public session from July 24th. So moved by Ms. McElhany, second by Mr. Frida. All set? All those in favor?
Aye.
One abstention. And non-public one from July 24th. So moved by Ms. McElhany, second by Mrs. Cardinal. Discussion.
I'm going back to public.
All set?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And one abstention. I need the pronunciation of that name again.
Gazer. Look at it.
All right. Thank you. I always wonder if it's Geezer or Gazer, but it's with a Z sound.
Yeah, the original German is with the two S's.
Yeah. It was?
No.
I knew that!
It was! The whole.
And then you bought the omelets too, right?
I should have done this earlier. For those of you viewing from home, we have a new face at the table. Please welcome Mr. Mark Gazer, who's our new business administrator. And there's no one here other than us to clap for you and welcome you aboard. But we look forward to working with you, so welcome aboard. I'm sure there's some people at home going, "Who's that guy?" You know, that watch regularly.
And we don't have his nameplate yet. It's coming.
So, we're going to move into financials.
So, it took us a little bit to get things, fighting our way through the network this week. So the expenditure, year-to-date expenditure report was up this weekend online. The other two reports were posted late this afternoon, so those are also available online. If you look at the Farmington School Boards page, it's posted just below the agenda. So for the financials, I mean, we're just getting rolling. There's not an awful lot that's going to be largely earth-shattering at this point, I think. One of the things that we are looking at doing this year, we are certainly going to keep track of our, what line comes from what line, but to better highlight what we're looking at as far as if there's an expenditure where a line gets, would have been over-expended because of an additional need. If it's a one-time, then we'll certainly highlight that. But if it's something that was, that is showing that it's under-budgeted and needs to be highlighted moving forward, we're going to leave that over-budgeted so that it highlights that as we move into budget season. So that is a change for this year, but to let you know that that's what you're going to be seeing. There will be notations as we start looking at the comparative budgets moving forward, but that's how we're going to highlight that, rather than trying to do, we'll still do the internal transfers, so we'll know, yes, we're taking this from this, so that we know that this was expended here, and we're not spending it twice. But making sure that it's highlighted visibly here, so that people know where the needs are. Does that explain pretty well what we talked about?
Right. You have that history then. That'll be useful information when you set about here new budget development. You can see, oh, this account definitely should be adjusted going forward to reflect this type of expenditure in a different account.
Great.
Rather than fixing it all so everything looks perfect, you boost track of that history with those budget transfers.
So the where and the why for will still be done internally, but it'll look different here.
It's important to note that the bottom lines, we're still managing to the bottom line.
Absolutely.
So if there's overages in a certain account, it might raise a red flag in some people's minds, but we will make sure that it balances to the overall budget amount.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions? Anything to highlight on any of the reports, or probably not at this point?
Not really at this point, no.
Thank you.
I just have a question.
Zendo?
Sure. Have we received any more grants or anything, any updates on that?
Not since our last meeting.
Okay.
Yep. Always good to check. There is also in your packet, or I've given to you in hard copy, because these are hot off the press as well. In your packet was the SB2 Towns and Schools Annual Meeting Timeline from the DRA, and then we have done the, the district's version of our, all of our additional timelines moving into budget season, where that's going to go. We have tentative dates in there with question marks. These are historically the same day within, that we had met with the Budget Committee last year. Whether that remains the same depending upon their needs or that shifts a little bit, we have a little bit of wiggle room depending upon whether those two stays still work for them or that needs to move. I know that the council chambers get a little bit busy that time of year, so we're all jockeying for space. But it gives you, moving forward, kind of where we're going and what that looks like through April and when we need to have everything to DRA. If there are any dates here, and again, these are based on what we had last year. If there's anything that is burning question or dates that you'd like to see shifted, let me know. This is our first draft, and it doesn't need to be set in stone just yet. Some of these are easier to shift than others. The ones that are set by the DRA, last day to post notice of the budget hearing, those sorts of things, those don't move. But some of our internal dates, we have a little bit more latitude on.
What date does Thanksgiving fall on?
Thursday?
Hmm. Sorry.
I believe it's the 22nd this year. There are five Thursdays in January, in.
November.
November. Thank you. I know it was November. It's the 4th Thursday. I think it's the 22nd because it's the, or the 20.
I'll look quick for you.
Thank you. You're going to get there before I do.
The only reason why I ask is I remember something with the Budget Committee last year. They wanted the.
I think it's the 22nd.
Before the.
22nd.
The 22nd is Thanksgiving, and we're looking at the preliminary review to them on the 19th, which is before Thanksgiving.
Okay.
Good question.
And I anticipate that they're not going to want that later this year. They'll want it at least the same time.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Just a suggestion. Could we add in here a date for reviewing projected revenues?
Of course. I think that's a good idea. I would say we should, we will have, if not all, we should have the majority of revenues that we can readily project by the December 3 meeting, so we could do that then.
Great.
Can we give a copy of this also to the Budget Committee?
Absolutely.
So they know when we're talking with our department heads.
Yep. That's why I wanted this to be here, and then we'll send that to them.
So if they don't understand something that second time, maybe that they'd heard it the first time, and then they get it a second time, so just kind of like an imitation, but.
Sure. Absolutely.
Sounds good.
New business technology review.
And this isn't actually the review. This is, I'm looking to get a date for that.
Oh, right. Because you want to have a workshop.
For the meeting that we wanted to have. So I'm proposing next Monday night for that. It isn't actually the review itself. That would be, we just need to nail down a date when we can all be in the same zip code. That would be a budget, I mean, a board workshop. That's not a.
Meeting.
A standard meeting. So, does next Monday night work?
August 13.
The 13th?
Today, it works just fine.
Okay. We can either do it here, we could do it at the SAU, whichever you'd prefer to do. Doesn't matter. Here is probably a little bit more spacious.
Here is a little more roomy.
All right. We will do here.
Are we shooting for 6:30?
That looks good to me.
That should be fine.
Is six too difficult, Stan?
No, I can make it for six.
Okay, that's fine. Let's do six. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Henry Wilson's handbook.
You have the updated handbook and then the one from a while back that they were revising and tweaking. We are looking to try to do a final read, if at all possible, because we'd like to get that to the printer. They've spent quite a bit of time revising and formatting and putting in the revised policies and also the PBIS pieces that were not in there.
A motion to accept the handbook as a first read or final read?
Final read.
The second, the final?
Motion and a second. Motion by Mrs. Morin, second by Mrs. Cardinal for a final read.
I just have a question.
Sure.
In regards to the block schedule.
Block schedule is high school. It's not Henry Wilson's.
Oh, this is Henry Wilson's. Okay. So I was going to ask about the grading that was in here then. Does that, does the block schedule change gradings, though? Would it be a?
The block schedule isn't going to change grading. I mean, we are moving toward competency-based reporting, but we're not there yet.
Okay.
Okay. That was easy.
Any questions about the handbook?
When it's not in Spanish and upside down.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you. So for.
Just a little positive feedback on this one. I really appreciate having the marked-up version as well.
Yeah.
Where that was included in our packet, because it really helped expedite.
Highlight the changes.
Yep. So thank you.
Otherwise, there's a lot of reading. I will pass that on. Anytime I can give kudos is a good thing.
Thank you.
Do you have other new business?
Um, no.
New business from the board?
I talked.
Is that new or old?
I, it's new coming for me. The PR that we discussed, is that, would that be now or, or later?
I think that's up to the chair.
No, go ahead.
All right. I actually had a chance to look through some minutes of the Budget Committee unsealed, and I was just wondering if we wanted to do some kind of PR to say how we got where we are. Something to get the information out as to what happened and how we're moving forward.
Can you, can we, before we, before we go to that topic, what have we used the PR people for? Have we used?
That contract went through last year.
Right.
And I've not renewed it for this coming year.
We didn't use it last year, did we?
Some, some, and I didn't find that it was necessarily as responsive as I was looking for.
Okay.
So.
There's no sound. I'm told.
No sound? Mr. Shagnan, they say there's no sound?
No sound.
I should shut my bringer off now that I have that.
But at least there was no sound, so no one else heard it. Thanks.
I'd like to come back to our board with a regular kind of summary of what happens at Budget Committee meetings, I think, because I find myself correcting a lot of language that gets thrown out during meetings. And I think what Mrs. Morin was seeing is, in the sealed minutes that were unsealed, they're using language. There are language in those minutes, and I wasn't able to review those minutes because I wasn't there. And so, when we have the Budget Committee meetings, I would hope that anyone that's willing to pay attention to the minutes that are read are also paying attention to the minutes of the subsequent meetings when the corrections are made. I know we can't put much stock into that, because it would take quite a bit of, you know, dedicated time for folks to do that. So I think perhaps a summary, you know, of what was going on, what are some of the concerns, maybe that I can do that here.
So just maybe include you as a regular monthly report for Budget Committee?
Yeah. Do you think that would be valuable?
I think that's a smashing idea.
Using a template, maybe? With sections predefined, and you can fill those in.
Right.
Well, and if she's bringing back what occurred at the meeting and kind of just reporting back to this skirt.
Yeah. Yeah. What are some of the common themes that keep getting brought up? So for example, you know, there's, there's quite a bit of concern about our school district audits. Our auditors came and presented to us, and we've closed those out now, and we're moving forward in the form of audit adjustments that go back to cover the years where audit adjustments perhaps weren't done in a timely manner. It's being construed as misrepresentation or unlawful.
Lawful.
Withholding of money, and that is not the case at all. So I believe that that was set straight at the last Budget Committee meeting. However, if you just look in print and it's a good month lag, I can see, you know, members of the public being concerned about that. So I think it's fair to say that it's all.
It's for me, it wasn't, it wasn't necessarily the Budget Committee, but it's us telling the public how we're moving forward. You know, not, I mean, it wasn't my intention to go.
Yeah. Oh, okay. So what, I think we can talk about what happened.
So more of what are we doing?
What was supposed to happen and what we're doing differently going forward.
Right. Exactly.
And one thing I do want to make sure we address, we have, we have finished the general audits for years 14, 15, 16, and 17. The single audits, which are the audits of the grant programs, are still in process, and those are winding up, hopefully within the next few weeks. And then we're, we will be meeting with Plodzik and Sanderson, who are our new auditors. They will be on-site the 23rd and 24th, reviewing the closeout of school year 18, so that we can do the MS-22, so that we can get the tax rate set. The complete audit for 18 probably won't be completed until November, which is a fairly standard timeline. But they will be reviewing our year-end, and we're still in the process of closing that out. We have most pieces in place to have that finalized in the next week or so. I'm pretty confident that that'll be more so. We still have a few invoices kind of floating out there. We're trying to get cleaned up. And then we'll be able to put forward a much more solid number going into that tax rate setting and being able to do it much earlier than we've been able to do in the past. And then those monies from the four prior year's audits, those audit adjustments will be part of what is returned to set the new tax rate. It's not sitting in an account somewhere that we have access to it. It's not something we can spend. It's, it's out there on paper that becomes something that will decrease the tax rate moving forward, but it's not something that I can say, turn around and put toward anything in this school year. It's nothing that's sitting in accounts now that I could use to offset any.
So are you suggesting some kind of statement that explains just that?
And when I, when I thought of the statement, I thought we were still having a contract with the PR firm. And now I know that we're not, but I think we, I think there should be some statement to, to let the taxpayers know that this is how we're correcting. This is our course.
On like the website?
It could be on the website. I mean, it could just be, yeah.
It's a good idea, I think, because it took me a few times of listening to your explanation to really grasp it, and I'm entrenched in it, to an extent, you know? Certainly more than your common layperson, I guess you'd say. So if there isn't a statement, you could fall into just listening to hearsay and really have a lot of wrong information.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and I don't, I don't, I don't think that anyone's purposely maliciously spreading this information.
Oh, no. Not at all.
Yeah. I think that it's very easy to use the wrong words.
Use the wrong words to explain, explain.
It happens all the time.
Yeah. Exactly. Yeah.
Okay, so.
It's something that we could.
So is that something you're directing me to write? Is that something that the board wants to craft with my input?
Yeah, we can craft it with our input. You can delegate to anyone. According to our policy, our board policy, it's the chairperson. To prepare any sort of media release.
Well, I was going to say, well, we could.
And that's certainly, that could happen as well.
Okay. Well, why don't we do that, then?
And then we'll all have some input.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then the other item, if I can just roll into the other big item from Budget Committee, there's a very big difference in opinion going on between both some participants from the public and sitting committee members, that it's inappropriate, this is their words, I do not share this opinion, of course, to pre-purchase the heating oil for the school district in the previous fiscal year. That is something that we just did, and as a school district, there's nothing wrong with that. However, a majority of the committee did vote in favor of having town council look into it, after much deliberation on why we would spend money on reinterpreting a law that has already been interpreted for all school districts across the state. That it's completely reasonable, and some would argue fiscally appropriate and smart to pre-buy your oil when you have the funds, as opposed to having the funds lower the tax rate to then just turn around and ask for it again.
Right.
It makes your tax rate go up and down when you do things like that. So that's going on. It was a split decision, but you know, they are, the select board is in, in support, I believe, based on the words of the selectman's rep, of going ahead and expending on town council expenditure to give that advice and give an opinion on that.
The town doesn't pre-buy oil?
I don't know. If they do, apparently they do it and did it a different way.
We did it one time, I thought.
So that's also going on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Football agreement with Newt. Took a look at that last time.
So two things on this. I do have a date here, and the closest I could come up with a date, and I'll give you my documentation, is I went back and found a contract with the football coach. And so I said, okay, well, I know at least at that point, we had a football team. The athletic director has informed me that Newt has already approved this.
Great.
So fall of 2007 was the closest I could get, because I had a contract.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just wrong. I just.
I know.
It just bugs me that we're putting something out there in agreement that has a false date.
No, I agree.
It literally would, I believe, and I know Mrs. Peabody, I believe, is on vacation.
She and I have got, I mean.
It would take a phone call to the NHIA.
Okay.
To have them tell you.
Exactly what date?
And they would probably have to research football committee minutes, but it definitely was not under this coach. This coach was not part of the merge with Newt. And it happened under the, when Art Jacobs was our football coach, and I was the AD. I didn't become the AD till the fall of 2008. And I really think it's either 2009 or 2010. So I just, I just think we need to have the right thing.
Board minutes?
Yeah. It's not going to change the agreement.
And I can't find that part.
Yeah.
So, I can't find anything in board minutes for that piece.
What do you think about striking the date? Is it crucial that the date of when...
I don't know.
I appreciate history of the program, but can we just start with, the Farmington and Newt school districts formed a cooperative football team?
It's fine with me.
Okay, I don't think the Newt board will object to striking that.
And then that way, we don't have to hold this. And I, I agree, I want it...
And then perhaps for the next round, if we change, if we don't just move forward with this exact agreement next year, changing the dates, then perhaps that, by then, we'll have an accurate date. All right, so I move to approve as a final read with the...
Striking of the first three words. Motion by Mrs. Cardinal, and a second by Mr. Frieda for a final read, striking those first three words. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Awesome job.
So, in that, then, I will do one without draft, and we can get it signed.
Are there old business? From the board, or any old business?
I have, moving forward, I have the pieces from the security infrastructure, and I really don't have any more information there, so, no.
Nope, okay. Anything else from board members? There's no one here for public participation, but I always call it out, so folks know we're acknowledging that on the agenda. Our next, we will have a workshop next week, which will be a technology workshop. But our next regularly scheduled board meeting is Monday, August 20th, at 6:30, right here in the library. At this time, thank you to those of you who are viewing from home, I'm sorry if there was a sound issue, I hope it get rectified. I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public session one, under RSA 91A colon 3, 2, A, B, and C, for personnel. So moved by Mrs. Moore, second by Ms. McElhenney. All those in favor, I roll?
Aye.
Good night, folks.